All right, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, October 6th, 2020. All members are appearing remotely via Zoom. We are recording the meeting. In case anything goes wrong and we cannot finish the meeting, we will continue this to November 10th administratively. Doesn't mean that we'll necessarily be doing that, but in case something goes wrong, you can tune in on November 10th. So we have a couple of items on our agenda, but first of all, is there anyone here who would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda tonight?
Yeah, I got something to say.
All right, Harry, what do you got?
I researched out the water situation in the town, and they told me that they're, well, East Hampton will never run out of water. There was absolutely nothing to worry about as far as water in the city, so for what it's worth, and when they told me, my concerns aren't concerns, so I thought I'd bring it up to your attention.
Anybody else with anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Jeff?
Thanks. Just impromptu right before the meeting, a member, Brenda Saylor, reminded me that I could put a plug in for residents of East Hampton and people who use our open space and recreational areas to fill out a survey. It's online at easthamptonma.gov/OSRP, and there will be a virtual meeting on November 5th, and the information for that is online. But we went as far as possible to get this postcard out to every household in East Hampton. So we had a mailer, which was 9,000 pieces of mail that went out to try to help people be more aware of this project in particular. So there's information available online, but I just wanted to put a plug in for that.
I ask you a question about that.
Sure.
You said you sent 9,000 out. Is there a limit to the number of people that can respond? Can only those people that received it respond? What does the deal with, anyone that wants to go online can respond? Do they need to be a citizen? What are the criteria here?
The criteria is very open. I mean, the idea is that if you utilize trails or Non-Hack Park or the bike path, you know, whether or not you're from East Hampton, you can take the survey. There is a question about whether you live in East Hampton, so we are able to kind of use, you know, the data in different ways. But yeah, anyone who uses the facilities in East Hampton is encouraged to try to take it.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Anybody else with anything that is not on the agenda tonight? And just so everyone knows, if you do want to say anything, if you either raise your virtual hand or turn on your video and wave your real hand, if you're calling in, I think *9 gives us a hand wave, or if you just want to unmute yourself and ask to speak, we can do it that way, too. All right, seeing nothing, we will move along to the continued public hearing for Cynthia Stepler, seeking a special permit and stormwater management plan under Section 8.3 and 12.7 of the zoning ordinance for the construction of an 18-unit multifamily residential development located at 69 and 73 Loudville Road. Is there someone here from the applicant to speak?
Before that happens, Jesse, did you say the thing about, like, if something happens with our meeting and something terrible happens, we need to postpone it?
I did, it's November 10th.
Thank you.
So, and just for anybody who's new to this process, so we've been having these hearings for several months now. We've gotten some more information from the applicant based on concerns from citizens and from planning board members. We did a site visit. Let me just find this date. Site visit was September 24th, and we went and walked the site again. We'd been out there once earlier. So I think what we'll do is we'll hear from the applicant about some of the supplemental materials they provided. We'll have some questions from planning board members, and then we'll open it up to the public for comments or questions. I also have probably a half dozen letters and emails that I'll read into the record when we get to that point. So first up, Rob, if you want to explain to us sort of what we got. We got quite a bit of material in the last couple of days, I think.
Yes, thank you. For the record, Rob Leveque from our Leveque Associates. I believe also with us online is Jessica Allen from our Leveque Associates. She was helping me put some of the information together. Specific to that information, we have provided a number of documents. There was some updated information as how we were meeting the special permit criteria. I believe there was also some basic elevations that we have that we can show you. I don't know if those are in the email packet or if we just have those. Some more, you know, architectural drawings versus, you know, just the pictures that we had showed you in the past. Since the site visit, which we thought went very well in terms of giving people an idea of what we were trying to do and where things were going, since that time, we went out and we located the trees that were in question along the property, back property line of Mr. Bartishevitz. And we have coordinated that work with our shifting of the units, and we were able to shift those units. So I have a sketch that I can show you. We have the updated drawings that show the new building locations, but I also have an illustrative sketch that kind of shows the specific tree locations, so you can see how we were able to save some of those trees. And, you know, on that particular sketch, we located the larger trees. Not, there was a number of small saplings and other understory vegetation that we didn't bother locating because they weren't mature trees, but it'll give you a kind of a picture of what we were dealing with there. And I believe most of what we did in responding to questions related to the architectural character of the proposed units and the overall overarching discussion about how this fits into the context of the neighborhood in general. So that there's a lot of stuff we can go through tonight, but that's generally what we've submitted. And I don't know, Jessica, have I missed anything specifically? Through the chair?
No, I think the one last piece was a development schedule that was requested by the planning department that we have supplied as well. So that's one other additional piece of information that's been supplied.
Great, thank you.
Great, so we've had a chance to look at it, although some of it came in sort of briefly before the meeting. So, but, and it's been on the website, I think, most of the stuff already. But if you can sort of walk us through the supplemental materials in whatever order you want to at this point, that would be really helpful, I think, for the public at least.
Sure, I believe both Jessica and I have it on our computers. So Jessica, you want me to do that, or would you like to walk through it? Okay, I'll go ahead and do that. Let me just, with the chair's permission, I'll share my screen.
Great.
Okay, so, so I'll probably go through the revised plans last, if that makes sense.
That's fine, I think, as long as we can cover all of this, I don't think the order necessarily matters right now.
Okay, very good. So in response to, this is the tree location sketch that I had described. This is the shifting of the units.
Rob, I'm not seeing anything, I don't know if everyone else is, but...
No, I'm not seeing anything either.
Man, I've been doing that lately. Is that any better?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. So now you should be looking at the tree sketch, which also shows the shifting of the unit. So to orient everyone, this is Loudville Road at the bottom of the page. The proposed condo road comes in here and then bangs a left, and then there's this cul-de-sac. So there was some discussion, Mr. Bartishevitz's property is right here. There was some discussion about the proximity of the existing, or the proposed structure, proposed condo building, which would have two units, four and five, within it. It was located where the red is, okay? So the red is the original location of the unit. We were able to reduce these separations between the units going clockwise around the cul-de-sac. So we were able to pick up about 10 feet between each of the units. We were originally about 25 feet, now we're at 16. So just under, just under 10 feet, so nine feet. We picked up nine feet between each of the other two buildings. So as we did that, it allowed us to shift. We shifted the building over, so this is now located within 16 feet of the other building. And then that gives us approximately 41 feet from the property line to the building. Now, there's obviously work that needs to be done around the perimeter of the building to make sure that we can backfill the foundation and those types of things. So we're showing that. We have a limit of work silt fence. You'll see that on my plan specifically, there, if you remember, there was a pretty good-sized oak. We got a, calling it a 32-inch white oak right here. And then there was a hemlock. The hemlock was pretty much providing most of the canopy in this area. There was also a 36-inch pine that was actually, it's dead, so it was, it's fallen. And then there's another 20-inch ash. So there are some other, there are some other trees. Obviously, as you, there's trees within, where we are, within the limit of work that need to be removed, but we were able to maintain those major trees. So we will be saving, just for the record, we will be saving that 32-inch white oak and will be saving the hemlock as well as the green ash. The dead tree, they'll probably want to remove that, but that only goes up about 35 feet, and then it's broken off, so there's nothing above 35 feet. So they might decide to cut that down, just to the, at least to the base of the dead tree. Everything else within this crenulated pattern, there's our number of trees on the Bartishevitz property. I didn't bother locating them, but there's a number of hemlocks in quite a few trees beyond the line, also on the adjacent property. And then we have a lot of understory and a lot of saplings. You know, there's probably, you know, every, you know, there's spaced roughly, you know, anywhere from five to six feet on center. There are trees throughout this area that provide kind of an understory buffer slash canopy, because they are, you know, they're probably anywhere from 20 to 30 feet high. So a lot of what you see from the street is made up of those smaller trees as well. So should be a really good buffer there. Obviously, we're supplementing the rest of the buffer, but certainly right there, I believe we've achieved what the planning board was looking for in terms of maintaining the canopy that you see from the street.
And Rob, I know at the last meeting you were in conversations with Mr. Bartishevitz or maybe his lawyer about some sort of screening or planting. Has that gone anywhere, or is that still under discussion?
It has. So we have gone as far as to work, so Jack Jacobic is the attorney that represents Mr. Bartishevitz. After our last site visit, I went and spoke with Mr. Bartishevitz, very nice man. Mrs. Stepler, as recent as this morning, signed a document. It's an MOU, basically a memorandum of understanding between the two parties, where Mr. Bartishevitz is generally in support of the project. They talked about working together on buffering and also helping Mr. Bartishevitz to resolve the encroachment of his driveway down here. So it's kind of a win-win for everyone. What Mrs. Stepler signed is a document that basically says she'll be conveying a triangle piece to Mr. Bartishevitz that basically is one foot off the edge of driveway pavement. And that will allow him to, you know, he'll own that piece going forward. And that basically gets split off from the proposed project. We have all the frontage we need and, you know, no issue with regard to the overall calculations on frontage and area and all of that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, it's okay, I'll move on to the next item. So we've provided a construction schedule. We want to be clear that obviously things are subject to, you know, the interpretation of the contractor and, you know, market forces and weather and other things. But generally speaking, this is a pretty good guideline. So we've kind of documented this. So we have construction start date earlier than May 1st, 2021. We don't anticipate that that would happen by then. Obviously, we need all the approvals first before we can move forward. There is an appeal period associated with the special permit. So really, this fall is likely not an option for any sort of construction. So we anticipate logically May 1st. So clearing and grubbing, so that would be after the erosion controls and construction layout have been performed. We know that we're in the right spot, we have the erosion controls in place. Clearing and grubbing would take place, so clearing of the trees and grubbing of the stumps. And then, you know, that would be basically prepping the site for the earthwork. And then in the areas of the proposed earthwork, we would need to strip the topsoil, stockpile that on site, and that would be, you know, stockpiled in a location satisfactory under the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which is required for any construction project over an acre of land. So that we anticipate that those two items would bring us pretty much to July 1st. And then, you know, roadway utility installation. So they go with the deep stuff first typically. Water would probably be the deepest. There's a sewer force main, doesn't need to be too deep. But they would be installing all of the different utilities. And then drainage installation is probably just a little bit shallower, but generally speaking, July and August would be pretty much trenching in all of the utilities and drainage. I would expect that by September 1st, site stabilization around the proposed roadway would be taking place. It's obviously required to be done throughout the process as part of the stormwater prevention plan. But the, you know, kind of the loaming and seeding around the perimeter of the roadway, kind of having it buttoned up so that, you know, it's safe and stable while we're waiting for units to be constructed. We would expect that to happen in, right around that time. And that would be pretty much around September, which is a good time for seeding. And then they would be putting in, you know, boxing in the base coat, I'm sorry, the base course of the roadway. So gravel, base, compaction, and then roadway binder. So that's the first course of pavement that goes down is the binder. We would expect that to be sometime in, you know, in September. We picked September 15th just as an approximate. And then the, we would expect that once the binder's down, maybe a little bit prior, they might want to try to start doing a model unit and then potentially a couple of units that they might have already maybe pre, you know, have reservations on or something like that. Construction completion. So we would expect the roadway construction to be completed in that one season that we're talking about here. As far as the construction completion, you know, all of the units being built and then a final punch list being put together at substantial completion, that could take a few years based on an absorption rate of four to eight units per year. You know, you can expect that with, you know, we have 18 units, you can expect that this could be, you know, anywhere from a two-year project, probably at the quickest. When I say two years, I mean pretty much from when we put binder down and then all the way up to, you know, probably a four- or five-year project if it really slowed, depending on the market conditions. So that's pretty much the construction schedule. I don't know if there's any questions on that through the chair?
I'm not, and any members have any questions at this point? Uh, yeah, Jeff?
Thank you. Just, I guess, just for clarification, because, you know, the Conservation Commission issued their Order of Conditions, and I guess, Rob, just for an explanation, you know, part of the reason why we're asking about the construction schedule is, you know, so the idea is that the road would go in and then the drains. So the Conservation Commission, my understanding is that the Conservation Commission required the drainage to be in place, you know, in Phase 1, which is when the road would be complete, so that any drainage created, you know, any runoff or water generated from the road would have a place to go. And then from there, it's building each kind of individual site. So that, we just wanted to make sure that we're running, you know, a schedule that corresponds with what the Conservation Commission had required, too. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, so I think the general roadway construction is one season, and then, you know, I forget how the, Jessica's, I think, just reviewed the order today. But however they wanted us to come back and, you know, maybe do a pre-construction meeting prior to each unit or something like that, we're certain, whatever seems appropriate, we would be happy to work with the board and obviously the commission as well.
Right, so like the drainage would be built to the sufficient size for the roof runoff, even though it might not get connected for a period of years as the buildings come online? But that's, I just wanted to make sure that the construction schedule is just enough to make sure that the road gets in place with the drainage, and then it would also support the future build out of each unit as it goes?
Yeah, and I can clarify that. So in the general earthwork, the basin would be shaped temporarily. It would be a temporary sedimentation basin. Typically, we'd underexcavate it by a footer and a half, so that we're not fouling the base material. And then what we would do is the, during the roadway drainage installation, the basin would be, have already been shaped, topsoil would have been placed, seeded, and then that gets established, so that once the drainage infrastructure and the roadway is ready, we have the basin pretty much established, so that by the time we get there, we have a pretty stable condition where we're sending water during the construction condition to the basin and obviously going beyond the construction phase into the actual, you know, drainage for the project itself as it goes forward. That would be, you know, stable, and if it needs to be adjusted or cleaned or anything because of the construction conditions, it would be done, you know, pretty much as the site gets stable in September. So it's kind of an ongoing process for the stormwater basin. That's really one of the items we typically start with, because we want that stormwater basin stable by the time we even think of sending water to it.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, Rob, next up?
Okay, so these are building elevations. They're not for construction, they're just, they are the elevations of the units I showed you. There will be, you know, an architect's stamp required on these that will probably be updated. But this is the general configuration of the unit, it shows the elevations. We had quite a bit of information provided as to how we felt we were meeting the different requirements. If Jessica is available to discuss some of those items, why, while we have the architecturals up, it probably makes sense to cross-reference the architecturals with the narrative that we've provided regarding some of those, some of those specific sections. I don't know if that's appropriate, but if that's okay with the chair, we'd be happy to do that now.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so in the memo that was sent to the board, the first section was, that was requested, was a written response to the multifamily design requirements of Section 8.332 of the zoning ordinance. And so the first standard to be met is that the building shall be in harmony with the prevailing character and scale the buildings in the neighborhood and the city through the use of appropriate building materials, screening, breaks in roofs and wall lines and other architectural techniques. So in the memo, how we listed it is that they are consistent with the style of architecture and massing of existing houses. The buildings will be approximately 1,500 square feet in living space per unit. As you can see, they're generally a Cape Cod architectural style with the side gable roofs. I don't know if we can see it on this graphic, but the design of the roofs is that they're lower in the back and higher in the front, so you do have a pitch that creates some variation in the roof lines. We did an analysis based on the GIS assessor's database, and it's on the last page of the memo that was provided. And we looked at a quarter mile in each direction, going east and going west on Loudville Road, and provided the square footage, the style of the home and the number of stories for each of those uses within that quarter-mile stretch, including the subject property. And you'll see in the analysis that the height of these buildings is consistent, that the square footage is consistent with the neighborhood. And so, you know, in our opinion, we believe that this style fits in with what's already existing in terms of the style of the architecture and the massing and the roof lines and the square footage of units already on Loudville Road. And the second component that we needed to meet was variation in detail form and sighting shall be used to provide visual interest and avoid monotony. Again, the pitches of the roofs, the windows, the window dormers, this all adds some variation to the style. And again, we believe it's consistent with similar styles that are in the neighborhood in terms of the style of architecture. And then the third condition was to relate harmlessly to each other with adequate light, air circulation, and separation between buildings. And based on the measurements of the site plan, the buildings can range anywhere between 20 and 100 feet from one another, so there's variation in that style. There are similar styles and architecture details, but the buildings are at various angles. There's, you know, there is variation in the site design itself. It's not like there's just houses being plumped right next to one another. They're turned and tweaked in such a way to provide some variation on the site plan. So that was our response to Section 8.332, which deals with the architectural details. I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
I think that's good.
Okay, any questions before I take down the architectural elevations?
No, thanks, Rob.
Thank you, guys. I keep hitting the wrong button, sorry. So I think we just responded to the architectural questions. Is there more, there's more response for another section, correct?
Yes.
Okay, do we want to do that now? And I can bring up the revised site plans. Generally, you've seen the change to those units, but I can bring those up while we're going through that, if that makes sense.
That sounds good.
Jess, did you want to touch on those?
Sure, is it the preference of the board that I go performance standard by performance standard? Or do we want just a general narrative in relation to it?
I think it's helpful to go through each one.
Okay. So on the memo, the second section that we dealt with was Section 8.331 of the multifamily design requirements. And the first standard is that the development shall be integrated into the existing terrain and surrounding landscape and shall be designed to protect abutting properties and community amenities. And I think what's important to remember is that, you know, this really was designed with the land and that the visual impacts to abutting properties are minimized because of the existing vegetation that's along the brook and the proposed plantings that will be used for screening. The buildings are sited away from the wetlands and any natural communities. They're sited away from the isolated vegetative wetlands. And they, the buildings are sited at where the grade is the flattest and the minimal amount of grading and cut and fill is needed. So in our opinion, we believe that we've met that standard. For the second standard, it says that building sites shall be, to the extent feasible, minimal use of wetlands, steep slopes, floodplains, and hilltops. And I'm going to read this, because I think it's important that the board understands all the details to this, especially with the slopes, because I know from my understanding that this has been a point that has been discussed. So the units are sited to minimize impact to the wetlands and steep slopes to the greatest extent possible. Steep slopes is not defined in the East Hampton zoning regulations. Slopes exceeding 3:1 or 33% are considered steep slopes per engineering standards and require specific erosion control standards. The questions were raised by the board for units 8 and 9. The majority of that building falls in a slope less than 5% or one foot rising over a 20-foot run. The slopes at the rear of the units are approximately 10% to 2%, however, minimal grading will take place in this area as the units are going to be utilizing an English basement walkout design. The remaining buildings fall within the upper plateau areas with slope ranging from 2% to 5%. Any slopes approaching the 3:1 will be stabilized with erosion control blankets as approved by the Conservation Commission under the Order of Conditions. And this property is not located in a floodplain or on a hilltop. So again, the design and the way that these buildings have been sited, were sited in such a way is to minimize the amount of grading, to place them in the locations where the grade is the flattest, and I think that we've met that standard. The next performance standard in that section was to minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. And doing an analysis of the buffer between the conservation area on the other side of Hanham Brook, the range of the forested area there that Rob's pointer is looking at right now, that range is anywhere from 180 feet to 320 feet in depth, and it's a thick wooded area. So, you know, while it is, yes, abutting against the conservation area, we believe that the visual impact is going to be very minimal because of the size of that buffer and the thickness of the forested wooded area in that location. Number three was to preserve unique natural or historical features. It does, the site does not contain any historical features, because the property is not listed on the state historic inventory. And the limit of work for the project avoids all the wetlands, isolated vegetative wetlands and their associated natural features. So again, the development is tucked into the area on the site that makes the most sense. sense for it to be tucked into. Number four was to minimize tree vegetation and soil removal and grade changes. And what we did here is we did a little bit of numbers analysis, and if we take the entire acre or the entire parcel, the total limit of work is 4.69 acres, which is about 31% or one-third of the entire parcel as a whole. 80% of the site is wooded, and only 2.2 acres of that site are slated to be removed, which means that we're only going to be removing 13% of the total vegetation on-site, which is a pretty small amount compared to other developments. In addition to all that's being protected and preserved, there's going to be additional plantings within the, within the project itself. The roadway's been designed to be, again, minimal impact with cut and fill, and the only real earthwork that can be required is for boxing out the proposed road. And as I stated earlier, the buildings are sighted where they make the most sense from a design standpoint. Number five, maximize open space retention. As I previously said, the limit of work is, is about one-third of the total parcel, leaving 69% of the entire site completely undeveloped. Undeveloped portions are either protected under the Wetlands Protection Act. The applicant will attempt to have the isolated wetlands certified as vernal pools, and we can have a protective designation through a declaration of restrictions and covenants, which would be through the Homeowners Association. Number six, screen objectionable features from the neighboring properties and roadways. In addition to the natural vegetation that's already going to be in place, there'll be additional screening with white cedar arborvitae's along the property lines in two key locations, which Rob can zoom in, I think, I'm sure, right on the corner there. In addition, we're going to be retaining almost 12 acres of the parcel with buffer plantings around the perimeter of the site, and the development is tucked in. So again, we believe that, that the way that the project has been sighted, that we're going to be screening from neighbors and from the roadways. I think there's one, two more here. So one more structure may be placed on, on a lot, but no residential structure may be placed closer to each other than 10 feet and must be visually separated by trees and plantings. As I said earlier, the range between the buildings is anywhere from 20 feet to 100 feet, and we've got plantings throughout the entire project limit of work site that will add some additional softness to the, to the design and will provide additional buffers and screening. In addition, each dwelling must be provided with access drainage and utilities functionally equivalent to that provided under the Planning Board subdivision rules and regulations. All of the road, the cul-de-sac and the utilities design all meet the city's subdivision regulations and have met those standards, and they've been designed to those standards, so we do meet that. And then finally, in the downtown business, highway business and mill industrial districts, no dwelling shall be permitted on the street level. It's not applicable to this project because we're in the R-35 zone. So that goes through all of the standards of 8.331. Does the Board want to talk about any of those elements any deeper?
Jessica, can I just ask you about where the basin is in that back field? What is that field going to look like when, if and when this is all done? How will that be situated? What's going to be there?
Yep, so.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I can speak to that, Mr. Chair. The Stormwater Basin is an, is an earthen basin that will be lined with, with topsoil, probably four to six inches of permeable topsoil, probably sandy loam, and the slopes will be three to one, which is a mowable sideslope. So you can expect that, and just to give you an idea on depth of that basin for a second, let me just zoom in. Or maybe it won't let me. It's about, it's anywhere from five to six feet deep. The reason for the depth is to be able to get all of the stormwater from the site into the basin and have, you know, it's got to, obviously, you have a depth at the roadway of, you know, four to four and a half feet down where the invert of the pipes are, and then it runs at a minimum of 1% towards the Stormwater Basin. So eventually it gets you to a point where you're a little bit deeper. But those, so that'll be grass, that'll be sideslopes. It's designed to drain during frozen ground conditions. We have a, a couple dry wells in there so that in the event that there is, for example, an ice event and then a rain and then ice, we need that layer cake effect, we'll be able to be confident that in those smaller, you know, February rain events, we'll be able to get the water to drain properly.
Okay. And it's just planted with grass after construction? Is that the cover?
That's correct. There is at the forbay. I believe there's a riprap apron at the, between the forbay and the basin itself, but other than that, yes, it's, it's grass.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Jessica, do you want to go through the rest of this memo? We're almost done.
Sure. So the other element that we were asked was to respond to two comments from the Conservation Commission. One had to do with the protective designation to undeveloped areas, and like I said earlier, we're happy to discuss having a declaration of restriction and covenants that would, would help to protect any areas that are not already under Wetlands Protection Act designation. We're open to that, and I think that'd be fine. The other was the evaluation of the isolated vegetative wetlands within the property for possible vernal pools. Again, those will be evaluated, and if the documentation shows that they qualify, those will be submitted to Natural Heritage and Endangered Species for certification. So those were the two items that the Conservation Commission had raised, and we don't see any issues with that.
Okay, thanks.
The last has to do with the Homeowners Association document and how it will address maintenance and which elements to be covered. So we've been having some conversations with some area attorneys. We were asked to try to find a boilerplate and have a conversation or provide at least a draft of what the Homeowners Association document might be. And from what I understand through the conversations that I've had is that there's really not a boilerplate per se, but individual attorneys have forms that they typically use when they're crafting Homeowners Association documents. We think it's a little premature to ask that of the applicant, but it was posed to us as a, as a possible condition, is to have a final draft presented to the Board prior to the issuance of a building permit, and I think that's a condition that we would, we would accept and be fine with. And if the Planning Board wants to identify any specific elements that they'd like to see, whether it's having to deal with road maintenance, whether it has to deal with, you know, dumping brush in the, in the conservation areas, in the wetland areas, we would be open to that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
I think that covers everything in the memo.
And I think that was all the supplemental materials. Does that sound right, Rob?
I believe so, sir.
Okay. So Planning Board members, do you have any comments or questions at this point? Brenda?
I do have some comments and questions, but I was hoping to reserve it so we could get to members of the public before we got too far down the road. I really want to hear from the public and see where they are with all this right now.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I'm going to start with reading these letters and emails.
Harry was, Harry was raising his hand, too. Sorry, I don't know.
Sorry. Harry's not on my screen here. Harry, what do you have? You're muted.
Yeah, the question I, how much of this product is being used on this, of this property? How much property we have and how much we're using? What was that figure?
Me unmute myself, sorry about that. So the total, the limit of work is about one-third of the total property.
So where, all right, so the question that I had, where's the rest of the property located?
It's, it's kind of off this sheet, so I don't know, Rob, if there's.
Yeah, I'll pull up the GIS real quick just to show everybody.
Yeah, is there any way of seeing this project, where it's located on this whole property and where the rest of the property actually is located?
Yep, I can show you that. Is that it? Is this the correct one, Jess?
Not seeing your screen.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was going to say the same name. Do I have to download an interactive viewer?
I might be able to pull it. I think I already have it up on my computer. Let me see.
Actually, page two of your packet has it, I think. Sheet, sheet existing conditions, one.
Okay.
If you go to the search button, you can type in 73 Loudville, and it'll just pop you right over there.
All right, so that's the whole, that's the whole thing there then, huh?
That's all of East Hampton.
Yeah. That's all he said.
So, can everybody see this?
Yes.
So the isolated wetland that is on our site is about here. I believe that shows up. So our nearest, the cul-de-sac is right about here, so there's a, this whole entire area here is all remaining vegetated, as well as all the way down to the stream, and then our Stormwater Basin is approximately about here. That's helpful. I can turn the aerial on, I think.
If you go, actually, Rob, to the top, third button over, next to the editing tools on the other side of your screen. To the other way, up. Almost, right there. Bingo. Go to local.
Yeah, you guys, your, your heads are in the way. Sorry.
Oh. You click on the local, it should give you the back.
That's a little, probably, can you guys see that okay?
Yep.
Okay. So again, here's the field we walked in. The units that we talked about around the cul-de-sac, which is approximately here, will kind of be in this area. And then all of this vegetation remains, all of this vegetation, pretty much from the top of the slope or even higher up remains, and then all of this.
Okay.
All of this here, I should say.
I just want to see it. Okay, I'm, I'm good with this. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to work on my public reading skills and get some of these letters into the record, because I think there's a lot of good comments and questions in here, and then we can open up even to some of the same people that might be here, but I want to make sure that everyone has a chance to get their word in. And I believe the applicant has probably gotten most, if not all of these already, unless they came in at the last minute. So first one here is an email from Carolyn Smith. How far along in the permitting process is this project? It seems that there are some issues for residents, and because notification was only to abutters, not many had any advance notice. I do think that 18 units is too large a project for that land, especially as the land abuts conservation land and a seasonal stream. I know that because of flag lots not being allowed in this zone, that it means larger projects can be built with legal access road as opposed to single-family with a normal driveway. I know the landowner has a right to do what is legally possible via zoning guidelines, but obviously 18 is too many. This needs some revision. I also know that the demand for housing in East Hampton is great, and there is very little land left for development, but condos in a single-family residential and more rural areas not the answer. More appropriate to have condos in the existing factory building with price points that are affordable. The conclusion that these condos would mainly appeal to older and wealthier buyers is not realistic. It is well-known that older residents who wish to downsize or move into condos cannot find ones in town they can afford. The 350K-plus price point puts these out of reach for many. I would like to know how to get more involved in seeing that East Hampton has smart growth, not just wherever there is enough land that the zoning accommodates. Thanks, Carol Smith, 40 Loudville Road. Then I have an email from Joseph Enrada Sibiteresi. I apologize to everyone for name pronunciation in advance. This is October 2nd, 2020. Dear Mr. Bag, my husband and I are relative newbies to East Hampton. We relocated in 2005 from Beverly, Mass. on the North Shore. One of the driving forces for our move was the drastic changes that were happening in Beverly. We lived in a neighborhood of single-family homes that were built in the 50s and 60s. There were several estates that bordered our neighborhood that were privately owned. In the late 1980s, a huge change in property ownership of the estates began. Large tracts of the estates were sold off to developers. Within a period of approximately 10 years, over 500 single-family cookie cutter McMansions were built. This overdevelopment increased the amount of vehicle traffic, and because of the vast amount of land clearing involved with the development, changed the topography of the entire area, which resulted in dramatic changes in the abutters water table, which resulted in the flooding of basements and homes where there had been none before. We love East Hampton for several reasons. The small-town feel, the friendliness of the residents, and the fact that the city has a wonderful approach to land conservation. If and when the highlighted project passes, it will drastically and forever change the feel of not only Loudville Road, but will also open the door to overconstruction, which could be detrimental to all of East Hampton. We are strongly opposed to the luxury condo development of property 6973 Loudville Road. Please do the right thing for all the residents of East Hampton. Thank you. And I have an email from David Merrick, October 2nd, 2020. Dear Jeff Bag, after hearing of the proposed 18-unit luxury condo development for 69 to 73 Loudville Road, we needed to let you know our opinion. We have lived on Loudville Road our entire married life, 39 years. We love it out here in our country setting with one-family homes spaced out and private. The only thing that is not good out here is that this road is already a very busy road. Cars and trucks drive very fast down our street day and night. We have had our mailbox crashed into many times. One time, we even woke up to a car that was driving way too fast, missed our mailbox and ran right into the tree at the edge of our property in our front yard. Scary stuff. Having a huge development built on this road will bring so much more traffic to an already busy road. 69 to 73 Loudville is also on a slight curve in the road, like our area at number 104. So I am certain there will be many accidents with all these extra cars in and out of this development. We are against this project. We want to attend the October 6 Planning Board meeting, but are you actually having a meeting during COVID-19? Please let us know how we can attend and show our support not to build such a complex on such an already busy street. Thank you, Judy and Dave Merrick, 104 Loudville Road. This is an email from Chris O'Connor dated October 4th. Dear Board Members, as a homeowner in East Hampton, I am writing in reference to the special permit being considered for the Loudville redevelopment. I attended the last meeting regarding this proposal, but as I have elevated concerns, I felt it necessary to follow up with this letter. I ask that this be read during the next meeting for everyone's consideration. I believe it to be on October 6, 2020. There are a few items that just don't seem to make sense. My hope is that they can be explained accordingly. As mentioned during the last meeting, it's my understanding that East Hampton is in the process of creating a citywide plan assessment for housing. I am not sure why we'd be considering a special permit, especially given the concerns and objections that have been expressed from the neighboring taxpaying residents. Namely, expanding the residency in the area from one to 18 housing units versus a more reasonable number, i.e. a few single-family homes. Increase of a minimum of 36 cars to that area. Initial concerns from the Conservation Committee. Outdated traffic study. The style of proposed housing, two-car garage units, are not congruent to current neighboring style. Traffic and safety. Given the bend and entrance location, drivers frequently drive well over the speed limit on Loudville, and pedestrians often walk and ride bicycles. From the apparent progression of this process, and as one of the Board members seemingly expressed how impressed and excited he was with how good this project looks, looked, it looks like this could be a done deal. Given the fact that only abutters were notified and other neighbors are only now becoming more aware of this and its potential impact, I would think it makes sense to slow down. East Hampton has a lot at stake here. There will always be an offer from a resident and salesman, Mr. Levac, interested in making money, but it only takes one time for East Hampton to make a decision that will reduce its unique residential feel and value. The taxpaying residents are expressing their disinterest in being left withholding the outcome of this proposal. I believe most agree that housing development is fine, overly done is not. Sincerely, Chris O'Connor. Couple more here. This is an email from Marissa Carreri, 6973 Loudville Road, dated September 27, 2020. Dear East Hampton Planning Board, we write as a family who lives on Loudville Road to express our opposition to the 24-unit development planned for 69 to 73 Loudville Road. It is deeply concerning that the Planning Board would authorize developers to purchase single-family home properties and transform backyards into large-scale developments. We purchased property on Loudville precisely because it retains a rural character and connection to undeveloped open spaces, true to its designation as R-35. We take seriously our responsibility as stewards of land to abut in the beautiful Hanham Brook. We respect and love the black bear, fox, coyotes, turkeys and deer who regularly wander through our yard as they struggle to survive in East Hampton's ever-shrinking wooded and open spaces. This development will irrevocably disturb wildlife and the ecosystem of Hanham Brook, as the Pascama Conservation Trust has cited in their opposition to this proposal. It will also... and connection to undeveloped open spaces, true to its designation as R-35. We take seriously our responsibility as stewards of land to butt in the beautiful Hanum Brook. We respect and love the black bear, fox, coyotes, turkeys, and deer who regularly wander through our yard as they struggle to survive in East Hampton's ever-shrinking wooded and open spaces. This development will irrevocably disturb wildlife and the ecosystem of Hanum Brook, as the Pascama Conservation Trust has cited in their opposition to this proposal. It will also dramatically alter the semi-rural character of the Loudville community. The trade-off for living out on Loudville with pedestrian access to our vibrant city downtown is to be among trees, wildlife, and lower-density spaces. To transform Loudville into high-density developments will leave us with increased traffic, noise, pollution, and crowding without any of the benefits of urban life. We are particularly concerned about our neighbors who live directly in front of this proposed development. Their property values will surely be damaged by this development as they become landlocked between the highway and condo buildings and parking lots. While this project surely will generate tremendous profit for the property owner and the developer, it will be detrimental to so many others. Now and in the future, as this discussion, as this decision potentially sets precedent for land use all across the city's R-35 zones, we urge you to respond to the concerns expressed by the residents of Loudville Road and by the Pascama Trust and reject this proposal. Marissa Carreri and David Barton, 135 Loudville Road." And one last one. This is from Dina Theodore, October 6, 2020. Loudville Development Follow-Up Letter for 10-6-20 Meeting. Hello, Board Members. I'm writing a follow-up email after hearing information from the last meeting held on 9/15/20. I continue to have concerns with the development and do not feel as though they were sufficiently addressed by Mr. Levesque. It seems to me that much, if not all, of the special permit criteria is up for interpretation. It was disheartening to hear that one board member seemed all set to vote to approve the permit before seemingly to take in resident concerns. I really hope that all board members hear and think through resident concerns, for it will be us who will be left with the consequences if this proposal goes through. A resident disagreed that the proposed development is consistent with the style of existing homes. I agree with her. You do not see any such multi-unit development anywhere in this area of East Hampton. Drive up and down Loudville, there are single-family homes, some with no garages, some with a single garage, and very few with a two-car garage. It can't be enough for Mr. Levesque to say he believes they are consistent with other homes or that people won't see it from the street. We all will see the entrance and portions of the development from the street, let alone neighbors. No one has addressed the fact that outdated information is being used for traffic patterns, crashes, et cetera. Information is from 2019, 2015 to 2017. The 2010 census commuting and employment data for the city of East Hampton is being used as well. The data is outdated. Each year brings more traffic to Loudville. All you have to ask is residents who live on or near there. Traffic can increase in just one year. You must also know that people do not drive the posted 35 mph speed limit, but upwards of 45 mph. It is not policed or monitored. Have the police given their input? Adding at a minimum 36 cars to that road from one parcel of land is increasing the likelihood of more crashes or vehicle incidents. Furthermore, it can endanger the many people who walk along Loudville. And despite Mr. Levesque saying there are clear sightlines entering, exiting from the development, I would disagree, as I venture many other residents would as well. People who drive Loudville daily know the patterns and potential hazards. There are no acceptable answers to the following special permit criteria. Quote, adequacy of the methods to ensure that the use will not constitute a nuisance by reason of unacceptable level of air or water pollution, excessive noise, or visually flagrant structures and accessories. 12.7.10 Conditions Safeguards Limitations. Mr. Levesque's response is the following. Quote, "The proposed multifamily development will not constitute a nuisance and will be consistent with the residential neighborhood and zoning district," end quote. How can he possibly guarantee this? He can't, no matter how he spins it. No one can. We have no idea who would buy these townhomes, who they would have as guests, the number of cars they would drive, what they would care about, et cetera, despite implementing an HOA fee. It is not a 55-plus community and they are large townhomes. The sheer volume of units greatly increases the chances of noise and environmental pollution. They also would greatly affect the trees and wildlife that currently inhabits that land. Effect on neighboring home property values. We have no idea of the impact, but what we do know is that Loudville Road and neighboring residents are single-family home parcels, not multi-unit developments with two-car garages. To add a development will dramatically change the landscape of that area. We all bought single-family homes for a reason. To change that landscape can negatively affect us all. Precedent. Many have expressed great concern that if this is given the green light, it will set precedent for future developments. Mr. Bag suggested the board looks at each case separately. Unfortunately, as many of us have probably experienced, it is not a reassuring response, as precedent is usually always brought up in cases. Respectfully, Mr. Levesque is a self-described land ninja. His job is to develop a plan and then move on to his next project. While the proposed development seems nice, I do not believe it is appropriate for Loudville Road. Mr. Levesque seemed to suggest that he, quote, "played by the rules," end quote, and believes he has fulfilled the permit requirements, therefore should be approved. However, the permit is very much up for interpretation and Mr. Levesque's answers and plans are not satisfying to many of us residents. His response to the suggestion to reduce the number of units is basically negative, as it would not be financially beneficial. That can't be a reason not to challenge this notion. 18 units is too large a footprint for that area. Mr. Bag suggested a housing needs report will show East Hampton needs more housing. That may be true. However, it must be done thoughtfully to current taxpaying homeowners and there are other areas which may be more suitable for such multi-unit development. Thank you for your consideration, Dina Theodore." All right, so with that, I would like to open this up to any other members of the public or even people whose letters and emails I just read, to hear what you might have to add to that or say or, or other comments or questions you have about the plan. So, again, you can either virtually raise your hand on Zoom. If you're on a phone, you can do star nine. You could turn on your video and give us an actual raised hand. Or if all else fails, you can unmute yourself and ask to address the board. So, is there anyone else with comments or questions relating to this proposal?
All right.
I'm trying to monitor, I'm trying to monitor the participants tab and I don't see any hands up.
Yeah, I don't see anything either. I know Brenda had some comments and questions, so maybe Brenda can go. And if other people feel the need, they can post a, raise their hand or, or do something. So, Brenda, fire away.
Okay. Two quick questions. Has a builder been selected yet for this project?
I'm muted. No, 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 that, a builder has not been selected.
Okay. What about the property management company? Where, I forget. Has it been selected or formed yet?
Nope. You wouldn't do that until you have a place to manage. But probably right before occupancy is taken, they would figure that out.
Okay. I just have to go back to the concern I voiced every time. Make it smile, 8.332. And I appreciate all the work you guys have done to, to address our, our questions and concerns. But the ordinance is quite specific. It says buildings, not units of a building. Buildings shall be in harmony with the prevailing character and scale of buildings in the neighborhood. So, I saw from your drawing, you, you've reduced to one garage. Are you sticking with that or you need flexibility to have two garages?
No, we, we have not reduced to one garage. They, that's just a prototypical.
So, the foot, the footprint's still 80. The footprint's still 86 by 56.
Correct.
Okay. So, I thought your list was super helpful about listing some of the homes and, and looking at sizes. I do think it didn't go far enough. It kind of only looked at one side of, of the applicant. So, I, I, I did some work and I can send this to Jeff if you guys want to put it in the record or show it to the public, but I looked at 20 houses across the street and the comparable houses on either side of the applicant, which was 16 total homes. And, you know, the median living area is 1,321 square feet. That's, and somebody should check these numbers. I, I looked at the GIS property cards like you did. 78% are less than one and a half-story. 64% are zero-to-one garages. 58% are ranches. So, I'm just not getting there. And I think it's kind of a false argument to compare a unit to one of the single-family buildings. The requirement is to compare a building to a building. And if we do that, and these buildings are 86 by 56, one and a half-story or possibly two stories, as you've indicated in the past, you, you know, you want the flexibility to consider that. The scale, to me, is way out of whack. You know? And we can go up and down the road and add more homes. They just get smaller. You know, that's what I think the community is concerned about is the prevailing character of that neighborhood are really small, single-family homes. So, I'm just having a really hard time comparing a building to a building. It's kind of where I'm at.
Mr. Chairman, we can, we can respond to that.
Sure.
I think it's fair that since the beginning of the project, that's been your question and concern. We don't, you know, we can, I guess, agree to disagree on that account. We believe strongly that we've met the requirements for architectural scale. Nothing says these need to be identical to the houses in the neighborhood. It really doesn't specifically define architectural scale that I'm aware of. Having taken classes in architecture as a landscape architect at the University of Massachusetts and also having dealt with architectural and landscape architectural scale for years, I think it's pretty straightforward. You know, there are many houses within the neighborhood that are a story and a half. There are many houses on this side of the street that have almost the identical scale. So, a story and a half. Multiple gables. We have side-gabled roofs on our buildings. There are side-gabled roofs throughout the neighborhood. So, massing and scale. We don't have a three or a five or whatever story building. We have a very residential scale to our proposed buildings. Yes, there are two units put together. Frankly, under the regulations, you could probably do more than that. But, you know, we have two buildings put together. We think that keeps them residential in nature as opposed to your typical multifamily development. So, we feel strongly that we've met the architectural character. We respect that you may not. But you can, I think you can pick and choose from the Cape Cod-style homes on the, our side of the street. And then, you know, the vintage, I think Jessica went through specifically and looked at the kind of the assessor's card information to kind of find out when these houses were built. I think the ranches on the far side of the street were built pretty much at the same time. And there's, you know, there's different character to the, to the houses on our side of the street. But generally speaking, it's the same scale, same unit square footage. They're just put together. And again, we're massing in architectural scale. So, just so we're under, could I just ask you through the chair if you can define architectural scale for me so that I know that we're all talking about the same thing?
Well, lucky for me, I don't have to because I'm just reading the ordinance. So, I think at some point, common sense does have to come into play. If you're looking at a median-sized home of, you know, Jeff, I just sent you that file. I think you should share it if it's allowed. If the median size is 1,300 square feet of living space and you've got this, what I'm convinced is a huge building after doing the site walk, which was really helpful and to me, showing me how massive these buildings are. You've elected to also say, hey, maybe we need to build a two-story one. So, you know, I think.
Just to clarify. There's no two-story buildings, ma'am. There, there's, there's, there's a second story, but it's a story and a half. The buildings are a story and a half.
So, you're willing to stick with that? Because your application, your application says two stories. So, I'm just.
So, there's, so there's technically, so there is a second story in the house. But the over, the description of the exterior of the property, I believe, is accurate in saying that it's a story and a half. So, there's not two stories, there's not a full second story. It's a story and a half. So, call it a Cod-style home.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. In any case, I think we're looking at building sizes that are at least four times the size of the median single-family home. Jeff, do you have that yet?
Very close, sorry.
Okay. So, you know, I don't, I don't have to rewrite the ordinance. And unfortunately, it's not stipulated. So, I have to use my best judgment. And based on these numbers, I mean, there are one, two, three, four, five ranches, six ranches along the same side of the road. Where, so 73, I highlighted where the applicant is. So, that's the eastern side of the street. And then, across the street are the others. So, I also added a number of garages. And, you know, I, I just, I, you know, we can't keep going back and forth. I, I'm really, you haven't shown me anything to change my mind on this issue, that the scale is really out of whack of one building compared to one single-family building and then the density of multiple buildings. So.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
If I, so, Mrs. Slayer, if I were to show you the sizes of the homes directly adjacent to this project and show you that they are either longer. So, for example, Mrs. Stepler's home. I'd really like to show you how the footprints compare. So, there's footprints and then there's the general massing. So, we're not taller, we're probably not wider or longer than Mrs. Stepler's home. We, I think it's a pretty good example how we fit into the direct, you know, adjacent to the direct of butters. Both direct of butters that are going to be visible from the subject property is, is one, Mrs. Stepler's home and Mr. Bartishevich's home. Just to the left of her. And both of those homes have almost identical massing, scale, dormers. If anything, we have a little bit more architectural detail. And I will show you, if it's okay with the chair, I would like to show a comparison of the unit footprint between the two so that we can give some perspective on just how how close we are in terms of overall footprint. If that's okay.
That's fine, Rob.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. So, can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna go to the layout plan because I think it's probably the easiest to look at. So, I mean, this is a PDF, so it's a little hard to give you the actual dimension here. But you can see clearly that the overall length of Mrs. Stepler's home is almost identical or potentially a little bit longer than the proposed units, two and three, in the rest of the units. Obviously, we have 16, which is just a single unit building. But the buildings themselves are no longer than Mrs. Stepler's home. The depth of Mrs. Stepler's home from the front wall of the house to the back of the garage is probably just a little bit deeper than what we're proposing. So, my argument is just this. Our footprint for two units is almost identical, maybe slightly smaller, than the footprint of a single-family home directly adjacent. And Mr. Bartishevich's home has a detached garage. But you, as you can see, you know, it's a little bit different in that the garage is behind. But his house, it's a little bit hard to see here. I could go to the street view. Actually, I'll do that now. It's pretty clear that these units are actually, if anything, directly, based on the direct relationship, the footprints are almost identical or potentially smaller. There's ranches across the street. While the ranches across the street do not have a story and a half, we are in the same general development massing. There's, there are side-gabled roofs on those. And those have two, a lot of those have two-car garages. And I'll go to the, if I could, go to the street view again. I'll do that right now. Bear with me for one second. Technology's great when it works, isn't it? Oops, seven, I need 73. Sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'm noting that there are some comments being held in chat. You might want to address whether or not we accept comments in chat.
Thanks, James. We're gonna try to keep comments. When you'll, you'll have a chance to speak again for anyone who didn't want to. So, we're gonna do our comments orally so that everyone. So we're going to do our comments orally so that everyone can hear and it'll be recorded.
So, okay, sorry, Mr. Chairman. It's okay. I'll continue on.
Yep.
Okay. So this is Mrs. Stepler's home here. So the overall length of the home with the garage, which is attached, is, is probably just slightly longer than the proposed units that we have. The, the story that I was talking about, so the house is technically two stories, but the overall massing is based on a story and a half because the roof line, and that's what I mean by a story and a half. It's basically a Cape Cod style. So you have, and if anything, we have, our roof, and I think we described this in our, our notes, our roof ranges, it's a little bit more of a, a saltbox roof in the back. So generally speaking, this is longer or probably slightly longer than what we're proposing. Now, from the street, as I had mentioned, you know, the driveway, the roadway will generally be coming through this area here. You'll see the first two units on the left, but they're turned. So you won't see a unit of this length. So in terms of the overall massing of the unit, you'd have to drive into the project to be, to see the, the front of that unit. You'll see kind of a diagonal view of those first two units. As far as Mr. Bartishevich's home, I would just like to compare this to what we have. So, you know, his, his overall length of house, I believe, is slightly wider than our unit. And in our unit, we actually have a two-car garage kind of built into one half of our unit. This has a detached garage, obviously. So the, the first two properties, absolutely, in my opinion, and I don't think, I don't know how anybody could interpret otherwise unless they just didn't like the fact that we're developing, which I, which is fair too. But let's look at the next two. Okay? Same thing.
With all due respect, Rob, I mean, I don't think that's a fair comment.
I would like to, I think it's very important.
Let's let Rob answer and we can run again.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so again, so this is the third house. This is again a Cape Cod-style roof, side-gabled roof, has a dormer in the back. Story and a half. I don't know if there's a garage back there or not. I believe there is, and that looks like it might be a one-car or a one-and-a-half-car garage. Google's not helping me here. Oh, there we go. Maybe it's a two-car garage. So all of these houses have two-car garages. They all have the same height roof in general. They all have side-gabled roofs and most of them have dormers as we do. The next one down is actually a little bit bigger. So this one is wider. As you can see, quite lengthy with the two-car garage, quite nice. And actually, a little bit, I would call that, that more than a story and a half here with the garage. It looks like an addition. Same gables that we have, same side-gabled roof and, and longer. So as far as the size of our units, our units aren't going to be longer than that. Now, as you go across the street, to be fair, those houses are mostly ranches. So they're slightly lower, but not by much. Our, you know, our, our units might be just a little bit taller. We have the garages on these units. So this has a single-car garage. There's a two-car garage. So if you looked at the length of that unit, that is not drastically different than what we have. Might be slightly less. Haven't measured that specifically. But as you go down the street, same, same situation. Another two-car garage with a hip roof here, not a side-gable, but a hip. Two-car garage, maybe a little bit shorter. But again, in comparison to our units, you know, our units, our double unit is very similar in length to this unit. Slightly low, and this is slightly lower. But again, certainly not out of character with the neighborhood in terms of what we're proposing. This is probably the smallest house in terms of overall. This doesn't have a garage. This is the smallest house across the street. But I think that's generally an anomaly as we get farther down. And the reason I'm belaboring this point is because it's obviously important because there's, we've met, in my opinion, met all of the criteria, detailed how we've met the criteria of the special permit. And, you know, personal opinion, you know, is obviously part of your decision-making process. But certainly, I, I want, it needs to be fair and it needs to be accurate as we're looking at the neighborhood. We're, we know that if you go probably out 20 houses, maybe it's a little bit different. But I would argue that's probably not. This one, as you can see, you know, is an interesting, a little bit more interesting home. But has a garage, looks like a one-car, but it's wide enough for two. Just happens to have one door. Is lengthy in that from this side of the house to the other side of the house is pretty extensive. And then as far as the depth, because of the offset of the house and the garage, is certainly not, not any less than we're proposing for two of our units. So two of our units are generally the width of one of these single-family homes. Now, we also have a shed roof off the side here with some cars that, you know, have been stored there. So to be fair, I think that we are not any wider than the single-family homes in the neighborhood with our two units. And as far as height, I think we've explained that well. As far as general scale, architectural scale, I feel confident that this, it would be very difficult for you to find an architect that would say this wasn't the same general scale of the surrounding residents. Thank you for giving me the time to discuss that point.
All right, thanks, Rob. Brenda, did you want to respond?
Yeah. I, I'm glad you share my commitment to fairness. You know, that's why I provided the additional spreadsheet, which actually has the numbers on it. So this isn't about a personal opinion I have about this particular project. I'm doing my best to base it on data and my own personal observations. So I just really want to reassure you about that. I've approved other multifamily housing projects. So I really appreciate your passion and commitment to the project. I do. But again, that explanation isn't any different than the prior conversations we've had. I'm not sure you actually looked at the spreadsheet I just provided you. So.
I don't have it yet, ma'am. I haven't seen it. But I'm happy to look at it if that's something.
Jeff had it up. But, so, you know, I, I just respectfully disagree. I don't think the data is there.
Could we be specific about that? Because I think it's really important and not that I want to overbelabor this point.
I think we are belaboring it though, Rob. I got to tell you, I don't know what else to tell you. I took the hours to do the additional analysis.
We're not meeting the scale. So as I look at this.
Yeah.
How are we not meeting the scale of the surrounding neighborhood?
Let's go, let's go down and look at the prevailing character and scale of the typical home in this neighborhood. It's at the bottom there, Jeff. I can't see it. There we go. Maybe can you enlarge it, please? Thank you. So there's the average home's building size. And, you know, I, I just, I don't buy your arguments. I don't know what else to say. I'm not, I'm not seeing it. I'm not seeing that these really large buildings and multiple of them are anywhere comparable to a single-family home. There are no duplexes in the neighborhood. There's no multifamily housing in the neighborhood. I mean, I'm just.
So, so just, we, we're not required to, to compare ourselves to multifamily because we, you know, because.
I'm looking at the overall prevailing character of the neighborhood. If there was a multifamily housing complex across the street, that would be a really, a really different scenario. I think you can agree with that. It's not there. Duplexes aren't there. So, you know, that's where I am. And I've kind of exhausted myself with this analysis. I'm really curious to hear what other planning board members are thinking.
Yeah, let, let's move on from this one for now. We can always come back if we need to. But James, you had your hand up quite a while ago.
Sorry, I had to unmute. I did. And when I raised my hand, it was because I felt that Brenda Selyar, member Selyar, had done a great job, deal of research and I really wanted to see the data. And you, you were talking about it and I couldn't see it yet. So I was going to ask that we be shown it. And I'm grateful, you know, to be able to peruse it. And I'm going through it as much as I can here. I think this is, this is great work and it really adds to the conversation. You know, always we're looking for new information as we go through this. We've been at this since July 21st. This is our fourth meeting. And a lot of questions got asked and answered in the first couple of meetings. Definitely a recurring one is about, you know, conformity to the area with these homes. And I have to say, for me, I think your data is likely right, Brenda. I, member Selyar, forgive me. I think that it really comes down in this case to how we assess what is too far, what is close, is, is being within 1,000 square feet close enough. Is it the fact that they're split? Is it the fact that it's a, you know, a kind of project? You know, where for you is sort of the decision-making process? And not just you, by, by you, I mean all of us as members of the board. Where's our decision-making process on what is too much? So I'm actually not agreeing or disagreeing, excuse me, with your data set. But I do disagree with the overall decision arrived at for me. And it is not too much. It doesn't matter, thinking of them as two of them put together. They are, for me, as long as one or even maybe two of them homes in that, in that area are that size and there are more than that, then there's enough precedence of it to be there. Precedence is probably a bad word because frankly, I don't even require that. For me, it's conforming to 12.79. I do think the project was well-presented and put together so that we got a lot of answers to questions. I do think the applicant is going out of their way to listen to, as we all have, and to come up with solutions to work with the community. I was very concerned about traffic. Those questions were answered early on. Just about all the points that, that the cogent emails and letters we received, I feel we've evaluated and gone through. I understand, member Selyar, that you still feel very unconvinced about this, you know, conformity issue here. I, I just like to say I don't at all. I think this is a, I, I think they passed the bar. That's all I have to say.
Any other planning board members have any comments or questions? Chris, yep?
Yep. So I also want to thank the applicant for the site walk and laying out all the flags. I think that was very helpful. I also want to thank the applicant for moving units four and five and providing that tree buffer. I think that was very helpful. My concern is with the density of units four through nine now. Well, before and even more so now because now those three buildings are much closer. And it would come as no surprise that I'm still very concerned about units eight and nine. After being on the site visit and seeing where the limits of work are and then where the limits of the building are, it is significantly down that slope and that is a steep slope. And I really don't, I'm not convinced that after construction that there's going to be any methods to control erosion. And down that slope, I don't feel that the, there's going to be proper slope stabilization behind those units. I understand their walkout units, which makes it even more likely that there will be people wanting to create a backyard back there. So they will continue clearing down that slope so they can have a backyard. I'm very concerned about that. I think I would be much more likely, and I'm not concerned about any of the other units. I think that the other units, as Jessica had said, are tucked into the, to the rest of the site. And I think that's done very well. But for those three buildings, they are very dense. I would be much more amenable to approving this if it were two buildings there instead of three and they were spaced so that you were far enough away from the slope. So that's, I'm not asking the applicant to do it. I'm just saying that's my opinion as a way I interpret 8.3, 3.1. So I just wanted to make that statement for the record. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Any other comments or questions from planning board members? Harry? Got to unmute yourself, Harry.
Yeah, the question that I have is just looking at this whole property, if, if you were to given the green light, how many units could you actually build on this whole property instead of just doing what you're doing? Say what, say you had an entire build-out on this property. How many of those units or something similar to that could you put on this property?
I, I think it's a little bit tricky to answer, but under the current proposal, we are, based on the calculations that are provided in your zoning, from a condo standpoint, which is the approach, approach we've taken, we are, we're basically at, at the calculation that we're allowed based on open space versus units. Should, you know, for example, should this, you know, get denied? The proponent would, the owner would still have the right to subdivide their land. And then there's different regulations associated with that, as you're aware. So there's, you know, there needs to be a creation of, of frontage. We, early on, looked at that. The impacts to the overall land. Now, meanwhile, we would need to coordinate with conservation and, you know, respect that. But the impacts could certainly be greater for two, twofold. One, the, the overall lots would not be restrict, the overall number of lots would not be restricted as they are under the, under the condo. So you likely wouldn't see a two, two-thirds protection of land. You wouldn't, you wouldn't see that. You might see, you know, half of the land still being protected because of the resource areas, but you wouldn't likely see that. Also, once the roadway would be developed and lots would be created, there would be no restrictions on the homeowners other than the conservation restrictions along the river. But there would be no, no restrictions for buffering, no restrictions for expanding their property, clearing trees. As you can imagine, all of you folks probably live in single-family homes. No one's preventing you from doing something unless you're in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. So the, the control that we have under this project, in my opinion, would be lost once homeowners were to buy those. So the, the number of units, I believe, was, you know, maybe it was, you know, I'm trying to think of what it was, but, you know, we have a sketch of it. The roadway's a little bit longer. There's probably just fewer units, so probably not quite 18. Forget, I think it's a 35,000, it's a 35,000 square foot lot that's required. So, you know, you can, you can imagine we would be, you know, I forget exactly, but there, there would be a significant number of lots still allowed. But the problem is, in my opinion, you're not controlled, they're not controlled. Once the lots are purchased, they could clear up for the property line if they felt the need to do so in, in jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission.
All right. Would it be possible to put a condition on this that you couldn't develop any more property on that piece of property?
Absolutely. And we have suggested that. It was suggested by the Conservation Commission. We have already been restricted by the order of conditions. But in addition to that, we have, we are happy to put a declaration of restriction on the property, which would further solidify protection of the, we'll call it two-thirds of the property generally.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
If I may just respond to Chris's comment about that particular unit and concerns about any additional work coming out of that walkout basement. I mean, that's the type of thing that would be in a homeowners association agreement and those are the types of things that would be identified for each individual unit. So if that is a concern, that could be something that could be drafted into the, into the deed documents that run with the property.
Thanks, Jessica. James? You're muted again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, especially for reminding me about the unmuting. So to preface what I'm about to say, this isn't to suggest that anyone's going to vote in favor or against either way. But I wonder if maybe it might be a helpful exercise to kind of go through conditions in order of what we might consider. Again, I know that one condition might be too much for any individual or, you know, but just so that we can kind of hammer out maybe the ones we can agree with and, and work toward the ones we really need to focus on.
Yeah, I was going to ask, I was actually going to sort of do the opposite. I mean, I think that typically what we would do at this point is, you know, direct Jeff and the planning department to sort of put together a draft agreement. I'm less inclined to have him do that work if there aren't, if there aren't enough votes for people with any conditions that they would approve this. So, I mean, just for me personally, I, I think, I think Brenda makes some really good points. And I think, I don't think this is as clear-cut for me personally. I agree with James that this is, it's a personal sort of feel. I do think I'm swayed on the size of the buildings. I'm still uncomfortable with a lot of the tree clearing and some of the density that Chris mentioned. But I, I think for me personally, I can see a scenario where if the conditions were right, I would vote for this project. So I do think that that makes sense, at least moving in that direction. But I think it only does if we're. At least moving in that direction, but I think it only does if we have enough votes to do that. If people are uncomfortable. At a scale that it's not going to happen, then we can save Jeff at least a lot of work. So, I mean, I guess I'd like to do just sort of a straw poll for planning board members. If you want to chime in as far as whether there are conditions or alterations that you could see that would make you comfortable with voting for this kind of a project. James?
I'm sorry, I just wondered before we actually got that poll, and I think I love where you're going with that. Chris, you just mirrored that. Those buildings which had extra density or had the slope that was a particularly intense grade there and your concern with them. And now we're straw pulling to see if we think maybe we could put conditions to work around. I wondered if maybe we could toss that to Rob a little to kind of give us a scenario first. Of what we might be able to do with those or they're willing to do with those to maybe iron that out.
Through the chair, I'd be happy to.
Yep.
So if, can everybody see my screen? Okay. You know, Chris, Chris makes some good points. You know, I did hear his comments during the site visit and I was listening intently. I was pretending I wasn't, but I wasn't. Yeah, so understanding, you know, understanding the questions related to eight and nine. Majority, the majority of the, of that unit is, is on a slope that's, as you can see between the contours is, is less than 5%. I believe in Jessica's discussion, I think she said 10 to 2%, but for the rest of it, but I think it was 10 to 12%. I saw that might be a typo or maybe we just didn't read it right. But so the rest of, you know, kind of the backside of the unit is, is generally still. If, if, you know. If everybody's familiar with a handicap ramp. A handicap ramp, just for reference, is 8.3%. I think that's always helpful as an example to what we're dealing with in terms of, in terms of slope. As we get towards the back of the unit, there are, there are areas that are a little bit, a little bit steeper. But again, there's little earthwork that will be required. We can, you know, we can, you know, we can place conditions on, you know, how the construction of eight and nine take place. You know, or, you know. You know, it's funny, our solution is the problem, right? So as Chris had mentioned, you know, those units are slightly closer. Slightly closer for four, you know, we have 16 feet between the units now. We had about 25, so they're a little bit closer, but generally speaking, not drastically that much different. Then, you know, kind of on the way in on the left with the backside of the garage and where those, those two other two units, two and three are. So, you know, what are the options? I guess options are to shift back, which really isn't going to, I don't think eliminate Chris's concern. You know, we could, you know, obviously eliminating units obviously makes the, the project less viable for Mrs. Stepler. At the same time, you know, we feel strongly that this can be constructed. We've been able to prove that to the conservation commission to the extent that they've issued an order of conditions. For our work directly adjacent to a very restrictive resource area in, in the riverfront area. So we're directly adjacent to that. You know, these areas were looked at during a site visit with the conservation commission as well. As you're aware, East Hampton has a very technically sound conservation commission with a lot of professionals on it. They did raise some concerns as well, but you know, they saw a fit to issue an order of conditions. So I think, you know, you can build the Empire State Building, you know, there's ways to attack things. There's also ways that, you know, these don't get constructed right. So we want to make sure that happens. It is important that, you know, we try to work on, you know, maintaining the number of units from a financial feasibility point of view. So I guess the short. If I were to shorten my response. I don't think shifting the units counterclockwise is going to get unit eight and nine. Drastically away from the slope. And it would, it would require us to shift the other units. I do feel comfortable that the 16 feet will still be attractive, given that these units are not in a row. They're, as Jessica mentioned earlier, are oriented, are kind of rotated so that there'll be some visual interest for these units. I've, I've developed units as close as 10 feet in a, on a South Hadley project. It's quite tight, you'd be very surprised that people, they look quite nice and people were quite happy. The intent here, I think in your regulation is to provide the opportunity for density so that you can get that open space. So. We want to remain flexible.
What about erosion control?
So, so we have, we have very specific erosion controls planned. So there's, there's really two layers of erosion controls at the very minimum. So all of the slopes, any of the slopes that are over three to one would be, would be loamed seeded with hydro seed. And they would receive an erosion control blanket. There's a very specific product that we like, that's in North American green. I forget the, the product number, but it's a, it's basically an erosion control matting that gets placed and staked in, into the ground. And it allows the vegetation to grow or the grass to grow and really stabilizes the slope quite nicely. In addition to that, we would expect one of two double barriers to be proposed. One would be silt fence and straw bales. Or oftentimes we see in a project of this size, the best solution is silt fence and an erosion control log. Not to be confused with wattles, which in my opinion don't work very well. But actual erosion control log, which has approximately a foot to a foot and change diameter. And is basically blown in, it's almost like created like a sausage. Where you have a netting that you have a hopper on the back of a truck that blows in a mulch mixture into the quote unquote sausage. And that creates a limit of work along the edge that can then be staked. And it works quite nicely. It works great in conjunction with, with, with silt fence. So there's a couple of different layers of control here. James, the first is the conservation order of conditions requires us to have, to have our double barrier and those erosion controls. In addition, any conditions the planning board would put on. And then third, I guess, would be a stormwater pollution prevention plan is required. For any work on a project site over an acre of disturbance. So it's, that's a pocket permit that very specifically gets maintained by the contractor. And they monitor storm events, they monitor the site and the erosion controls. And there are steep fines if they do not do so. So that's prepared by our office, registered by the contractor that's selected online. And then kept by the contractor with, with logs that are kept. And then if the EP, if for some reason there's a problem.
They can. What would a problem be? Is that like when neighbors throw things over? I mean, I'm looking to see, Chris raised, I think, some good points. And I'm looking to find places here where we might be able to come up with conditions to solve the problems that we're seeing. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but I think you mentioned something about, you know, your concern that is that really going to stop neighbors from throwing leaves and stuff over? I may be misstating that. It, do you, you know, is this something where maybe we can make sure that when the homeowners agreement or the kind of association agreement that comes up with this. Stipulates specifically that it's not allowed, that that happened? And I don't know enough, but I'm, I'm looking for ways that we can solve problems here.
So. Yeah. I understand where you're coming from. So there's a couple of different approaches that already were worked through with the conservation commission. One, the limited work can and should be monumented. With most likely bounds, concrete bounds or other monuments that are easy to see. That can't get knocked out in that these folks know where the conservation area is. I believe that might have been, I'm pretty sure that was a condition of the order of conditions. In addition to that, the homeowners association documents will have very specific requirements for limited work. So this is a homeowners association that will hire a professional property management company. That typically will sub out the lawn and yard maintenance to a landscape contractor. Those landscape contractors will have very specific restrictions from already from the order of conditions and anything that's folded into the planning board documents. So we can rest assured that the folks aren't going to be able to build patios and throw stuff out there or store anything crazy. Because it's all restricted under the homeowners association document or will be. And all of the, all of the restricted areas from conservation and also from these concert, I'm sorry. The declaration of restriction that we're proposing. Would further restrict any use of those other areas. So I think after stabilization and, you know, upon occupancy, you can, we can handle that no problem. I know Chris also had a concern, I believe, a little bit about constructability. But again, these are not, the majority of this unit is on not level ground, but you know, probably a 5% slope. And the backside again will be an English basement, so partial walkout. And, you know, those, those porches in the back would be raised porches. So really just sonotubes and as far as the actual unit itself and the foundation. That would be really in an area that's reasonably approachable and flat.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm less concerned about construction because I know that there, the erosion control will be there. I know the contract, it's up, it's who's the contractor to make sure that the erosion sediment control devices are working properly. And I'm, I know they will be inspected. Be challenging, it'll be more, it'll be more expensive for the contractor to try to build in these very tight confines, but it can be done. My, I'm thinking more long term to make sure that the roadway is protected. And it's not necess, I mean, leaves are, it is very important about leaves and whatnot. I'm just thinking the people in eight and nine will be in their backyard and there will be a tree come down or the tree come down or the tree come down. And then you're destabilizing that slope. And that can create erosion later on, not during construction, but after. So I don't know if there's a way to maybe make that one unit, but I don't even know if that will help because it's still. It's still, but even one unit is generally a square. So you're still going to be just as far back, even if you put it on it sideways. I'm just trying to think outside the box to get it away from that steep slope.
What about an extra maintenance condition that requests an annual assessment be done on that backend to, you know, to, to check erosion or something like that?
By who, the homeowners association or by the?
Homeowners, well, I mean. You know, we can work on it. I'm just tossing, is this a spitballing here, Chris?
Yeah.
I, I have a project site that has these very similar units and the entire, entire site is, is a slope site. We have, we haven't had any problems at that site. Really, the construction phase, I think my, my concern would be more construction phase. Beyond that, this will be a stabilized area. We can monument it and as far as folks, they, you know, no one. Will be undertaking any, no one, none of these unit owners will be undertaking any work or will be allowed to undertake any work under the homeowners association. So if a tree, for example, in a windstorm or something like that, if a tree came down, that would be professionally done. If it had to be, you know, cut down, cut and removed. As far as, you know, that, that type of destabilization, I think that's probably, you know, than likely over the, you know, the course of a decade or two, something like that happening. As far as human activity on that slope. You know, other than folks, you know, walking around the backside of their unit, the, the, these, these units are not typically designed. In any community that we've designed and we've designed thousands of them. They're not designed for active recreation in the backyard. These are folks that generally don't have kids and they're looking for a place that's maintained. They might be snowbirds where they come back and forth or they don't have a spouse and they, you know, want someone to be able to take care of. The grounds where they live. So I do think we could, you know, add some conditions, you know, if you felt there was artful conditions that we could add. I don't think one unit there would really, like, like Chris said, going to one unit there really wouldn't.
I agree.
Far away from the slope.
I think there might maybe a condition, something to the effect that there, you know, that there would be no clearing for the duration of this project. You know, as, as long as this.
In perpetuity.
Perpetuity, there's the word. In perpetuity, no clearing beyond the limits of work shown on these drawings.
And, and I agree, and actually that is something that both with the conservation commission order of conditions. And as suggested by Jessica in her response, that is absolutely something that we intend to do and have intended to do from the beginning. And have no problem through a declaration of restriction and associated monumentation along that edge. Be happy to keep people out. We, we want, we want the limit of work to be the limit of work now and the work going forward in perpetuity. So.
Yeah, and I like your idea, members of us about some sort of, sorry, some sort of condition about. Inspection, I just don't know who would do the inspection, whether it's Concom or the, or the homeowners association. To confirm that there is no erosion happening down that slope towards that riverway. Because that's, that's a really important conservation area and resource that we have. And I want to make sure it somehow gets maintained and protected.
Rob, any ideas on how that could best be accomplished?
Yeah, I've, I've seen situations in other projects we've done where there's an annual report. From the property manager that would, would, you know, and, you know, kind of an annual maintenance report. To let the, you know, either the planning board or the conservation commissioner both know that the project is, you know, everything's stable. It's, you know, all maintenance activity, there's been no, no changes to the stormwater controls, no changes to the, you know, limit of work. Kind of, kind of a stewardship of the open space as part of, you know, the decision. So basically not putting the responsibility of the conservation restriction and the stewardship over those two thirds of the land that's, you know, remains vegetated. On the town, or I'm sorry, on the city in any way, shape or form. But. Would put the responsibility on the homeowners association and should a tree come down in those areas, obviously, you know, a lot of those areas are subject to protection. So they would have to, you know, communicate anyway, but this would kind of memorialize that, that line of communication. And at least annual basis or whatever you guys agree to for a duration. They could do that, you know, they could, I, an annual report related to all of the aspects that the planning board probably has come to questions on. You know, operation of the, of the facility, any outstanding problems, if there was noise complaints, you know. We could, we could categorize a lot of the questions and concerns that were raised through the process by the abutters. And, you know, that could be a condition of the permit, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that would help, that would help me get my hands more on this project for sure.
I have a quick question before, Jesse, before you go down, there's just on the same, I guess, this vein while we're here is that. I would like to understand whether you think the homeowners association can extend beyond the limit of work. This seems to have been suggested a couple of times. So I think if we're going to go down this road of talking about conditions, you suggested that the homeowners association would prevent. Let's just say, for example, the owners of unit eight and nine from going beyond the limit of work established in this project. Can you really do that? You can, can the homeowners, can the homeowners association extend beyond the limit of work in terms of prohibiting? An owner from dropping lawn clippings or anything back there, creating a trail, that kind of stuff.
Was that directed towards me?
I believe it was, yes.
Sorry. I think the answer is the homeowners association will be created and each unit owner will have a percentage ownership in the entire property. So the, I believe the homeowners association could arguably take stewardship over the entire property. There's no reason they couldn't. And whatever CR, I'm not, I'm sorry, whatever declaration is put on the property and any other conditions that are put on by the planning board. And the conservation commission could be administered and enforced by the homeowners association. And obviously the board that issued those conditions. If that makes sense.
So Rob, the, the, just to clarify, so that whole parcel that you showed when Harry asked for all the undeveloped part. That's all going to be owned by the homeowners association as like a common area, right? Even though it's.
Yep, that's correct. In, in that open space area. We, we can't convey, you know, there was some discussion with Mrs. Stepler about potentially conveying that to the land trust or, or something. And because the project is required to have a certain percentage of open space for the unit count. We need to keep it all, the fee ownership under the homeowners association. However, the use and the restriction of that land is not, you know, is not restricted. So, or I'm sorry, will, can be and will be restricted, if that makes sense.
Right, okay, that makes sense. Jeff, did that answer your question? Okay. So I guess, I mean, we're certainly not asking planning board members to vote here, but I'm just asking if there's interest. In having Jeff try to put together a draft decision for discussion and, and figure out if there are conditions that would. for discussion and, and figure out if there are conditions that would make this project palatable for members. And I realize that, you know, you might say yes today and then look at a draft decision and say no. So I'm not asking anyone to actually vote in advance on this plan, but is there anyone who doesn't think it makes sense to go down that road of putting together a draft decision and trying to see if we can craft conditions that make people comfortable with it? Any planning board members?
The condition I would have is that the scale and density be reduced, but I feel that's ground we've already covered. The applicant has been asked that a couple of times now and has said that's not anything she's interested in. So unless that's changed, I'm, I wouldn't have much to add to a conditions-
Okay.
-conversation. Thanks.
Fair enough. Austin, any thoughts or questions? I realize you get to be the alternate here, so you only get to vote if somebody doesn't make it to the meeting, but you sit through these hearings and your opinion is as valid as anyone else's. So any, any comments or questions you have?
Uh, no, no, no comments on the voting after hearing the discussion with the livable square footage. I think the scale enassing is sufficient, but I'll come in and voting.
Okay. Thanks, Austin. All right. So if no one else does, I mean, Jeff, I think we've, we've talked about a lot of different potential conditions or restrictions over the hearings for the last few months. Do you feel comfortable with what we've discussed of putting together at least a list of things that have come up and we can hammer them out at a future meeting? Or do you want us to try to go through it now and figure stuff out? Or what do you think?
I just, I guess, I, I do, I don't like putting someone on the spot, but I would have, I would have one more follow-up question for Chris. Just about what, you know, we talked about the back, the potential concerns about erosion. I feel like that got addressed, but I, I had heard you raise a question about the density, sort of the units four through nine. And I think it's similar to where Brenda is at. And I just, I think the, the quantum vote that we need is four members to approve. So that's just important, look, in thinking about your, your concerns about density, whether, you know, because I, I think I understand what Brenda said is I, I think that the conditions that we would likely discuss are not going to reduce the density of the project. It'd be more about the future controls, the, the declaration, the homeowners association and that sort of thing, the schedule, compliance with the conservation commission order, you know, those, it's not that we would be extending a condition that would take out a unit at this point. So I just don't know if there's-
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I have to rely on the conservation commission, who has already provided an order of conditions. So they have evaluated this building and determined that it's feasible under the conservation commission guidelines. So I don't think that asking them to remove a unit is, is feasible, nor is it, it's, it's not in line with the conservation commission. I do have concerns about density there, but honestly, I'm not going to buy one of these. So if someone wants to live 16 feet away from somebody else, I'm not going to tell them they can't. I, I, so I think what I, I guess where I'm getting at is, I think that if we can control the, the rear of the unit through conditions, which I think we can, then I, I would ultimately vote to approve if the conditions were right. And I think we can get there.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I, like I said, I didn't mean to put you on, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I think that's helpful for guidance. I mean, the last thing, Jesse, I would just add is, just for board members in particular at this point, is that, you know, there was a lot of questions about the, the fact that this would set a precedent. But I think, I think it's important that we all understand that it does not set a precedent automatically. I think every case is handled on it, on its face and on its merits. So I think that's important because I, you know, I think some of the findings that we have to make, or I would propose to make, and then the board, you know, our processes that, based on our discussions so far, you know, and the general understanding where of, where the board, I can draft proposed findings. And then the board would convene at the next meeting and review everything and can change the language. But I think that's, that's something that doesn't factor in to, to the decision unless it does. And so that's, I just, the last thing I just really need, would want to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, Jeff. I think you're right. And I do think, I mean, the, the word precedent came up a bunch at several of these hearings. I mean, part of the, I don't want to say problem, part of the issue in these kinds of analyses is that, I mean, the precedent is really in the zoning bylaw, that there's a multifamily dwelling section that, you know, encourages multifamily dwelling. So they have to meet certain requirements and that's the part we're sort of hammering with. But, you know, the multifamily dwelling section is in the bylaw. So, yeah, I mean, each one of these gets reviewed on its own and some of us may vote for, some may vote against, and it may be flipped next time. It's, it's, I think there's a lot of judgment call here. But it, it sounds like at least, Jeff, that there's enough of a potential to pass with conditions that it's worthwhile to have you take those steps. And, I mean, who knows, maybe we'll come back next time and even with conditions, it won't pass. But I do think it's worthwhile to spend that time and see if we can find a way to make it work or not.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I'm willing to do the work, that's fine, on my end.
James is asking a question.
Oh, I lost James from my screen. James, what do you got?
I have to move profusely to appear on the screen, my apologies. I, I just wanted to make a request. I want to be sure to, you know, I got a glance at it this time, but I want to be sure to really give a good look at the hard work Brenda did and making that list. If we could just make sure that gets up on the materials on the site so that, so that we have access to it.
Yeah, and Jeff, maybe you could email it around to members too, just so we have it in our inbox.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. There was a, I did have a note of one other thing that Mr. Levesque presented tonight that we had not seen. And now I'm gonna click back. The same idea of, of information that would be useful to have available to everybody, oh, the tree sketch. So-
Oh, yeah.
The, the tree sketch was presented, not submitted, and then, you know, I don't, I don't want to pretend that I understand this, the nature of this MOU that you have discussed, but our, our understanding to, to leave this meeting would be that, that a butter is going to write something in support of the project with the modifications that we kind of discussed, as long as we understand that that's the nature of that agreement. You know, I think I, I think I have all the tools I need and all the discussions have happened. The information from the applicant, you know, forms the basis for the findings, you know, understanding that there are a couple of areas that there's, there's not unanimous agreement on. So I think the conditions, I don't have any other really magical conditions that we haven't talked about. So, you know, the, the, the schedule, I think, would be referenced as a condition because we want to make sure that we understand, and, and I, you know, prior to the issuance of a building permit, I'm sorry, let me, if I could, Jesse, I think that if this is important, I would go through just a quick exercise. So the schedule, the thought process on the schedule was that it would be referenced in the conditions such that we would want to review some kind of review opportunity for the planning board. If, if you play out that first unit, the timeline for that, and then if there is, you know, significant delays in the construction of the units, we want to build an opportunity and sort of, sort of a requirement for you to report to the planning board at some interval. And so I'll have to work that out. I think prior to the issuance of a building permit, there are going to be documents that come back to the planning board. And, you know, in my, in my experience, we, we will not be able to revisit the density of the project. We won't be able to revisit, you know, taking the permit away. But you would probably have some interaction with the board on the homeowners association agreement, making sure that it covers the necessary things that, that need to be covered. And I, we can provide the framework for that, but I, I just want to be clear that, you know, if, if something's omitted from that homeowners association and it's not to the board's satisfaction, they'll probably ask you to come back until that homeowners association agreement is in good enough shape to allow for the building permit to get issued. And then the declaration of covenants is something that I think is a little vague at the moment. But, so I think you would expect to make the vagueness go away and make it clear and concise what's happening. You know, the one, the one thing I haven't figured out, what we're going to do, and I'll have to put the condition in, I'll have to describe it in the condition, is that if you've, if you fail for some reason to come up with a declaration of covenants, that's going to satisfy the board and not, we have to figure out how that works. Because I think the words were attempt. Maybe the attempt was about the certification of the Vernal Pool and the, the word can, like, we could do the declaration of covenants. So, you know, those are tricky words for us to embark on, you know, and between now and a building permit. So those are the main things that are sticking out in my mind as to what would come out in language for the board to review next time.
Yeah, don't forget to add in the annual report that was discussed as well.
Right, and thank you. Can I just, I just want to say something about that, just for clarity, moving between now and whatever the next meeting is, is that there really should be no inspectional burden placed on the city. I think Rob did say that, but I, you know, we have no capacity to undertake an inspection. So the, the idea of property manager, as an example, preparing a report and submitting it is fine, but I don't think the city, you know, the city has no, no capacity to go out and physically do the inspection. So just, so that we're all on the same page with that general structure.
I think that makes sense. So, yeah, Rob.
I'm sorry, real quick, just to clarify, we, the language used attempt to, I think that was by the, talking about the Vernal Pool, because ultimately, we're not the decision makers there, but we, we will apply as requested and we will. So the language, you know, should certainly reflect that we will or shall versus, you know, making an attempt, just to, just to clarify that for the board. We're happy to, to do it that way.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I guess there, there wasn't public comment here tonight, but I did say I would open it back up again. Is there anybody here who has any comments or questions they'd like to add at this point? You can either raise a virtual hand or press star nine or turn on your camera and wave, unmute yourself and ask to speak. Okay, so I guess, I guess, Jeff, the question for you, we, we've got a bit of a scheduling issue here because we have election day coming up. So how much time do you think you need to get a draft together? I mean, the earliest we could do, conceivably, we could do it for a second event on the, what is it, the 13th? No, the 20th, after the Dunkin' Donuts project, although that may also be a long night.
Yeah, it's not enough.
After that, I think we're up to November 10th.
Yeah, I, I, the only, I think the only thing that's realistic is November 10th at this point.
I mean, I think typically it could go one week longer, but I think we can do that 10th since we can't do it on the 3rd.
6:00 P.M.
Before we make the motion, do the two people that made comments, do they need to be read into the record? Or is it, is that not protocol?
Um, that typed into the chat. Oh.
I'm sorry, I got disconnected. This is Chris, this is Chris O'Connor, thank you. Is it okay to speak, is, is it okay to speak now?
It is. Can you just give us your address just for the record?
Sure, 21 Ashley Circle in East Hampton.
Thanks, Chris.
Sure. So, you know, I, being new to this process in other cities and towns, I, I'm familiar with it, but, you know, it does, it's interesting to me that an awful lot of time and energy is spent on the accommodations to try to make this work. And I have to go back to respectfully, that when we were talking about the footprint, when I wasn't an opportunity to, to retort Mr. Levesque's point there, the footprint is different. If you look at the footprint, I hear what he's saying, square footage and the, and it looks like the size per unit for a single-family home to, to what he's putting up or wants to put up, or sounds like he's going to put up, it is different. The density, it's double, double, two families versus one family, double the amount of cars versus the other one. So it really, there really is a difference here. And I'm speaking to, and I appreciate, and I, I'm sorry about the name pronunciation, but Board Member Sawyer, that it feels like that's the voice of the people that, that, you know, I think it got heard through her, her comments. When we're talking about the, I think it's 8.332, the harmony and scale, that is important. And that is the most value, that value that you'll have in East Hampton. I've lived in the Boston area, I lived in the West area, and now I live in Western Mass. And if you, you know, and you can say precedence doesn't, doesn't matter, but one of the comments in this very meeting was in regards to, oh, you know, there, you know, there's another one that's like that, some, some, something. So it, it does matter. And I just, I, I hear that this is kind of baked and you're gonna, and it's going to be hard for it to, to turn away. And I, I gotta say, I'm very disappointed and I, and I think a lot of residents will be or are, but I just, I have to say that it isn't apples to apples when you're talking about a footprint. And I hope that it's still considered in your decision-making process. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chris. Anybody else with public comments or questions?
Do we want to address the chat? I think actually, Chris, in the chat was Chris O'Connor. I think that, okay, yep, and then-
I was trying to do those more timely.
I'll read the other, I'll read the other one into the record. I mean, we've been trying to discourage people from doing it, but I guess for the sake of the record, I will. This is from Carolyn Smith. Thanks for all the thoughtful comments and well-laid out plans. Again, I hope if this project passes, it does not set precedent for future projects. We all live on the street and already deal with heavy traffic because of the open space and habitat. It is not a subdivision and should be true to its rural character. Again, I say we need to rethink some zoning as the appeal of open space in town makes East Hampton desirable. All right, and I don't see anyone else raising a hand or unmuting.
Do, do Chris have a comment in chat too?
Yes.
Is this Chris to everyone?
Yeah, I think she made that, though.
Okay, just checking, sorry. Yep.
I have a question about the schedule.
Yeah, Brenda.
So are we scheduling, since the first week is the election, are we scheduling an additional meeting on the second Tuesday? So it'll be at the 10th and the 17th are our meetings in November?
I think certainly the 10th, whether we want to do the 10th, well, I guess the week after that is Thanksgiving, right? So it's probably better to do the 10th and the 17th as far as our planning purposes. Does that make sense, Jeff?
If we, if, if the board members are agreeable, I think that that would be great. There are a couple of other projects kind of potentially coming forward. And if it, if we can settle on the 10th, at least for this purpose, I can send them, I can send out an email to the group tomorrow just to clarify. This is, and I apologize, I didn't do this sort of in advance, I didn't really see, I didn't, I was not thinking November already, but this, the next, the next three months, we encounter quite a few, quite a few things that are going to potentially change the schedule, so the holidays in particular. So I would like to spend a little time looking at a revised schedule for the board and send that out, just make sure that everyone's still agreeable.
Okay.
But if we could, if you could at least pencil in the 10th and the 17th, I think it would be useful because we have the other project that will, is kind of been running concurrently with this one, which I would expect needs another date as well, probably. So the 10th and 17th-
You can pencil in the 17th, but I think we're about to pen in the 10th if we're-
Are you ready?
Yeah.
All right, so I guess I take a motion to continue then.
I'll motion to continue the public hearing for Cynthia Stepler, seeking a special permit, stormwater management permit under section 8.3 and 12.7 of the zoning ordinance and 12.76 of the city ordinance for the construction of an 18-unit multifamily residential development comprised of 10 buildings and all associated driveways, parking areas and associated site work. Property located on 6973 Loudville Road to November 10th at 6:00 P.M.
Seconded.
All right, voting to continue to November 10th. James?
Aye.
Brenda?
Yes.
Chris?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
And I am an aye. So we will meet back on the 10th and see where we are. Thank you all, another long night. I would take a motion to adjourn unless anyone has any-
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All right, to adjourn, Harry?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. You all got shuffled on me, I had to go a different order there, very strange.
Have a good night.
Have a great night, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Bye.